Pauling County Board of Commissioners, October fourteenth, twenty fourteen, work session. Welcome all our invited guests and elected officials. I say, Mary Davy, thanks for being here, and thank you to all our other guests. I'll remind you to turn on all next cell phones and pagers as it does interrupt. And I would like for you to stand if you're able, and I'll approach. Let's pray. Dear the Father, may the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable unto thee, oh, Lord, my rock and my redeemer. Lord, we just want to thank you for the richest blessings that you put upon Pauling County. May we do what it says in the Bible, take those and multiply them. Lord, we ask for the forgiveness of sins. We ask you for wisdom and discernment. We ask you for those in public safety that we just honored this past Saturday to always watch over them and our armed forces that protect us and give us the right to them. Lord, we ask you for all these blessings, and all God's people say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you want me to make sure that y'all saw this? Early voting have started. Is my number correct? I think they voted four hundred and forty people yesterday, maybe a new record for a first day event. So I'll remind you, early voting has started. There's no excuse not to vote. You'll have the Saturday to vote, and you almost had it Sunday, and we decided not to go that way. But get out there and vote. If you can't do that, vote on election day. But vote, and vote often. Minutes, the September twenty-third, twenty fourteen work session minutes and September twenty-third, twenty fourteen board meeting minutes are available for your review. Today, we've got a couple of announcements. It says none, but I'd like to tell you that we have promoted George Jones. George, would you stand and be recognized? George is our new Assistant Director of the DOT. And this is Michael Carter's last day. So, you know, unfortunately, after ten years, he's made a change in careers, and we wish Michael the very, very best. He was our Water and Sewer Department Director, so we'll be looking for someone to fill those shoes. Better words, there's none. Reports from committees and departments. We have John Dean, a member of the Airport Authority Steering Committee. John, would you come forward? I think you have a PowerPoint.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank the Commission, Board of Commissioners, for this opportunity to present this and for the opportunity to work on the Steering Committee. Mike Mason, our Chairman, wants to extend his apologies for not being able to make it together. You know, an attorney had a court appearance today. With that said, let's get into our presentation. Before I retire, I was Marine Corps General Carmichael, or, excuse me, General McCarthy told me three things to do at presentation: be on time, be brief, and be seated. So I'm gonna try to handle that. I would like to thank Rebecca and all of her staff today, because she's the one that actually got this where we can have it as a PowerPoint today, because I became totally unprepared and this gentleman was letting us borrow his computers.
We'll get a bill for it.
With that said, we'll go right into it. Today, I'd like to present a situational background, a brief summary of, and our due diligence of what we did, present our recommendation. There were a few other observations that we saw during our time period of what we're doing it, then to recap and summary of what we recommended, and then entertain questions at the end. During the situational background, we're going to give a brief statement of what got us into the, how we became a Steering Committee, cover committee members and our charter, what our tasks were, what our goals were, what our objectives were. As we all know, that the airport was developed and opened for their doors in two thousand eight. That was one of our corrections. We had two thousand seven, and I like to have never found the date that it was actually open. There's several reasons the airport did not perform like we had projected. A lot of issues came up, and in an effort to correct this, the Airport Authority ventured on the path to commercialize the airport. A lot of people took this wrong, there's lawsuits and a lot of partisans. So the County Board of Commissioners established a Steering Committee, not only for the airport, but for the IBA also. And this is the Airport Authority's review. We had members from each of the posts, the Chairman, the two cities, and the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not gonna read the names to you, but on this team, we had several master's degree. Like I said, Mike Mason is an attorney, Terry Tivitts not only has his master's degree, but he's also an A and P, licensed mechanic. We had very depth of aviation and management experience on this team. Oh, and our two Commissioners were taught from there, they come up when they were advisors. When we first started, we didn't have clear charter or direction of what, we didn't understand exactly what the Commission was looking for. But we did get a copy of the nineteen seventy-two Code of Ordinances. So we assumed that that's what we were supposed to address. So we went through and actually defined what our objectives were, what our tasks were, what our scopes were, because we didn't want to get out too far outside and make this a retirement project for the people who want old enough to retire. So with that said, our main focus was on the Code of Ordinances. What recommendations could we make in the Steering Committee to revise the Code of Ordinances and to help the county through some of the issues that they were at and improve what we were doing? Our deliverables, this presentation is our deliverable to the Board of Commissioners with our recommendations attached. Rebecca said she would send everyone a hard copy of this. We actually had nine meetings. The, one of the August meetings, we showed up, or, excuse me, July sixteenth meeting, the entire committee showed up at the Airport Authority meeting, just to see how it was conducted, what went on. We had several guest speakers come and talk to us. And I'll go through our meetings and what we did in each one of these meetings that we went through. We, before we jumped into recommendations to the committee, we actually did a lot of new diligence and research to figure out where we were at and what the best approach would be. Wrong way. In our June the fifth meeting, the Board of Commissioners actually established our Steering Committee. Then we decided right then that we needed, with the scope and what was in the Code of Ordinances, excuse me, about a fourteen-page document that was written in legal terms, that we needed more than just a few weeks to do this. So we established our meetings on June. We were gonna follow it every Thursday after the Commission meeting. That way, if something happened in the Commission meeting, we'll be up to date on it. We had that scheduled all the way through the end of October with the presentation being the first of November, but we finished a little bit earlier. On the twenty-sixth of June, our first, I guess you should say, our real meeting, we had Mr. Cagle and Howard Maxwell come and speak to us. And Mr. Cagle addressed some of the legal issues that we're facing in the county, some of the challenges that we were facing from a legal standpoint. Howard Maxwell addressed how the process worked at the state legislature and how any of our changes would be impacting the timeframe. We just have dozens to derive a deliverable schedule, when we were presented, and when the Board of Commissioners needed our recommendations. Then we moved into July, and our first guest speaker in July was Wes Wapler, and he went over how the airport operated, some of the procedures, some of the interfaces that they were. He actually addressed his relationship with the IBA and the Airport Authority. And if you notice, at the very last of the July meeting, we started having citizens' inputs, inputs where we had actual open discussions with citizens at each one of the meetings. And that was a plan that we figured out throughout the entire thing. We would save the last thirty minutes of our hack, we were waiting for open discussions. And as you can see, the sixth of July, we went to the airport, to sit in on the airport meeting. Then, twenty-fourth of July, when we really started getting into some of our first inputs, we had a general discussion, and we didn't take a vote on it, but we had a consensus that the IBA and the Airport Authority should be separated, and we should remove the phrasing and the Code of Ordinances that tied them together. Then on the fourteenth of August, we met at the airport, and actually went down to the area that we were talking about. And this is about the same time that we realized that we were leaving the airport director and Wes Wapler off our distribution business, which was sort of ironic. We're working on an advisory board, and we let the Director or the Chairman of the Airport Authority off for the distribution. But Mike Davis had an overview of the five-year plan, and then after the plan, we went into some general discussions, just what if this, what if that. We didn't bring any motions up, but we discussed quite a few topics. Additional program management stuff, you can see some of the air stuff. The airport should be an authority or a department. Should we have a permanent Steering Committee, citizens approved? A lot of it had to do with input from how the Board of Commissioners and the Airport Authority communicated with the citizens. We did formally pass our first motion at this time that the wording in the seventy-two Code of Ordinances would be removed, that automatically assigned to six members from the IBA. We didn't go into any detail, but we just said that should be removed right there. Then we went into August, and twenty-eighth of August, which happened to be my birthday, which I'm the same age as my wife, but she's older.
Oh, you're in trouble there.
I got a real nice shot to the height of it. But we had Steve Justice from the State Economic Development Committee come and talk to us. He gave a very informative presentation. He discussed the advantages of an airport. He was real straightforward. We discussed topics of why the other, why two of the airports in the state had lost their commercial operation. And then we went right into discussions about what we should do and how we should do it, and went back into our title. We had posters up on the board, and we were discussing different issues, bonds, community relations. We were putting ideals on the board. At this point, Mark challenged the committee to come back with ideals, what you thought, or what we thought would be the perfect Airport Authority. And we were all over the boards, but the biggest thing out of that thing is we had the membership. There were several different opportunities that we saw in the membership. There were several different ideas that we worked on. Then on September eleventh, Mr. Austin Kinnon presented a brief presentation to us on his rationale and why the Board of Commissioners had passed the intergovernmental contract and why that, what he thought, why he thought that the Board of Commissioners thought that was a good idea. And we do appreciate that, that was very enlightening. And after that discussion, Mike really challenged us. He said, "We need to get our recommendations all together, put them in a format and present them to the Board of Commissioners." So with that established, we went right straight into our recommendations. Matter of fact, after that meeting where Mr. Austin addresses, we went through and addressed nominated, passed, all the recommendations that we have today. That's how motivated, I guess you should say, we were to continue. With that said, I'll go right straight into the recommendations. Our recommendations for section three oh three out of the Code of Ordinances is that it will be eight members. Be one member from the city of Dallas, one member from the city of Hyrum, one member, and this was a Dave Carmichael suggestion, I believe, was that we look at the state leadership, stay, take a step higher than where we're at, and actually bring a member on the Airport Authority, because the state actually controls the Airport Authority, because it's a state law that governs them. So with that said, we decided that the Pauling County Caucus would appoint one person, our recommendation to the Caucus would appoint one person to the Airport Authority. And then there would be one member from each of the Commissioners and one from the Chairman, which would give you eight people. This was actually real close to what our Steering Committee was, how we were established. The Chairman of the Airport Authority will be elected by the Board itself or by the Authority itself, and he will only vote if there's a tie. And we would have some long debates over ties, but it was quickly brought to our attention that we've never had anything even close to a tie. So if that comes into effect, he can play like he's the Vice President of the United States. So, that's the whole. And we also, one of the key issues we brought over our first approved motion was no member of the Airport Authority will serve on any other authority that boards. So that's how we brought our first motion and we approved it. Along with that recommendation of the membership, we decided to agree that we should have term limits. The term limits would run according to the Commissioners that appointed them or the mayors that appointed them. And the term limits for the state caucus appointee would run with parallel with the Chairman of the Board. So in other words, if we have, if these are approved and everything, people that are elected now will have a four-year term, but people, for example, from Mr. Austin's, will have a two-year term. You'll just finish out a short term to give to them, and then when the next election cycle comes up, they will be put on a four-year term. We discussed the bonds, we went back and forth. I thought we were gonna have people walk out on this one. And then we sat down and really looked at it. We decided as a committee, leave the bond issue as it is. And the rationale behind that was, if the Airport Authority needs a bond, they have to come right now just because of the economic impact. They have to come to Board of Commissioners anyway. So therefore, we're giving taxpayer representation on the bond approvals. Plus, if they ever get to where they stand on their feet, they're not getting taxpayer money still. It's a rug. So we agreed not to fight the battle of the bonds that there was no impact through that to as it is. There were several, what I said, several ideals and observations that we saw throughout this, and Mike wanted me to reiterate, the fact that our citizens' inputs that we had, we had, at the end of the meetings, we had almost a town hall meeting, and they would discuss and ask questions about the topics that we had discussed that week. We had to maintain, you can say on topic, because all of us could riff off real easy and go down several rabbit holes. But the biggest thing was, we saw the interest of the citizens to express their viewpoint and to take the time, the extra thirty minutes to an hour each meeting, to have them say that they have their thoughts and feelings about this was verified. The other non-legislative observations that we saw that are areas for improvement was there needs to be a clear vision statement to the airport, where we're gonna go, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it. And a lot of these are, we're gonna have a beautiful day-to-day comments, but better communications with citizens, and that would tie back into the town hall meetings, more accountability of government. We can apply that to the federal government right here or any city or any government. One of our committee members actually is a, well, it's Mark Cattler. He runs a PMO here and stores itself. It's basically a head office operation for our airport. He thinks that we ought to have, and it's a fantastic idea, a measured effectiveness of our projects. What are we giving for, buying for our projects? And that ties back into a lot of those that we have. The way he put it is very great. And then we've got another clear transparency within the county government. And in summary, we recommend that you go to eight. Airport Authority appointees, as we said, we think the term limits that we've decided or recommend are viable and realistic. That's pretty much what it is. Are there any questions?
I think y'all done a fantastic job and great diligence and staying on task. And I think we give him a round of applause.
If you want the Airport Steering Committee here today, if you will follow on your presentations that you just want to pass out, we have some individual recommendations that I'm not gonna go over. We didn't discuss them, and we didn't vote on them, so we don't feel it's appropriate to present them now, but there are some individual comments and recommendations that are passed back. And one of them is the time of the committee, as you said, Steering Committee said to make today. Thank you for the opportunities from the entire Steering Committee and Committee. And if there are not any questions, I'm gonna let the gentleman have his back.
Thank you, John. I want you to sit by the other John Dean, and we'll play that game. Will the real John Dean play? Y'all remember, that was a name pretty popular back in the Nixon administration.
Yes. I always say this, if you remember who John Dean was, then you just gave your rating. My book didn't sell, my wife left me, so here I am.
Thank you, John, great job. We have public participations, please, for those who wish to know.
They don't care.
Number one, sign up if you need to speak on any agenda item. Next, we have consent agenda. And with that, we have five items. Number one, adopt job classification, wastewater treatment plant superintendent for Pauling County Water System. Brian, is this anything, any consequence other than we just needed this?
Yes, sir. The retained item, as we discussed earlier, we do, we changed job classifications established from this budgeted to the last twenty fifteen budget, and the Board of Commissioners will give approval.
Thank you. Number two, declare a tax list of items from the wastewater department, sheriff's office, Department of Transportation that surplus and approved their disposal through auction and trade. Capit, that's given us this list. There are three vehicles from water, nine from sheriff, and ten pieces of equipment from DOT. So this list is available for your review. Number three, increase the amount of Silver Comet Trail camera project phase one from two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, approved in August twelfth, twenty fourteen, to three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Mike, will you tell us just a brief, you've talked all of them.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate y'all giving us the green light to move forward with this project with the understanding that this is coming for you today. The primary reason for the cost differential was largely the electrical. It's getting the power to the twenty-one different camera sites. In many places, we had meters in place, and we'd come off existing meters along the trail site, but in most locations, that was not the case. So we're physically having to install power poles run from the service provider, whether it's gray zone or whatever it is, to an installed pole. Then it goes underground, travels underground to the camera site, to the camera pole. So that's where the largest cost differential was. We are actively, so citizens see folks out on the trail. We are actively working on the trail today. We received both of our permits from GDOT on Friday. We're required to get a fiber optic permit and an electrical service permit. We have both of those in hand. The long lead time on the fabricated camera poles is what's driving the schedule right now. But we hope to have everything wrapped up in the next thirty, forty-five days. As these cameras become mounted and become live, we'll wait for all twenty-one to start turning them on. But as each one of them is installed, we'll start doing those.
Thank you. Number four, point Jeremiah Phil, so the Northwest Shore's Regional Commission to build the uninspired turn Ken McMillan with a term ending twelve thirty-one fifteen. And number five, Georgia Power Permanent Heasement for the relocation of existing overhead power lines. Do you wanna give us just a brief review of that, Chuck?
This easement's associated with the widening on Gilkerut Parkway. And the actual parcel is located across the road from the water system building on Gilkerut Parkway. And we had some issue working through the easement, mainly was the relocation cost. If those lines would need to be moved in the future, we had worked that out so that that would be their cost, not ours. But we feel like we're in a good enough position that hopefully that will be the case.
Someone will not move any of these items to regular session? Hearing none. There's no old business under new business. Number one, discuss action to adopt Resolution fourteen dash thirty, providing for the letting commission of an annual tax to provide funds for payment of the principal of an interest on ninety million six hundred forty thousand dollars in principal amount of Pauling County's County District, Georgia. General obligation, refunding bonds, series twenty fourteen, Capit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you know, bonds have incurred a low interest rate over the past few years, and the school board had some bonds that were issued originally in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight that were receiving an opportunity to refinance some of those bonds. And this will result in a savings of eight point nine million dollars over the life of the bonds and about four hundred and seventy thousand per year in interest savings. This resolution comes to you because you're the taxing authority for the county. So every year, the school board recommends an M and O, and they recommend a bond rate to you. For the past two years, the school board's bond rate has been zero point zero zero, and I don't think they have any plans of changing that in this upcoming year. They're using their sales tax dollars to pay debts.
I guess our financial consultant for the Board of Ed, Steve, is here. Steve, do you want to add anything?
No, that's, that was a great, great subject.
Come up here, Steve.
Okay. No, just to say that it's not often folks come to you and ask to actually reduce the levy. So it's probably a rare occurrence, but we're thankful you out there doing the saving of a million and we're just putting some terms alone. No, thank you for what you do. And like Capit said, we have a hell of a picture of not using SPOSS for the foreseeable future. So really, this is just more preserving the ability to be able to collect through that bond and trade. But for now, SPOSS is doing exactly what we hoped it would do. In fact, our collections are a little bit higher than what we projected, so no reason to expect. We shouldn't be uncovering that, the total debt service for a while, so.
Any questions for Steve or Capit? Thank you. Number two, discuss action to approve supplemental number two with Georgia DOT to extend the contract time and increase contracted amounts by one hundred thirty-eight million five hundred one hundred, one hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred sixty dollars and thirty-three cents to approve supplemental number four with GP Enterprises to increase the contract by the amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand five four hundred sixty dollars and thirty-three cents. And to specify completion time for the required work by the Federal Highway Administration for waterproofing and crack sitting in the pedestrian culvert along the Silver Comet Trail for the East Hyrum Parkway project. Thank you.
I know this amount pulled kind of a long item. Just to explain it a little bit, as you remember, this project is largely federally funded and remains under control of the federal process for inspection and closeout of the project. GDOT is our partner and is passed through for the funding to us. And then we in turn contracted with our own contractor to do the actual work. And that's why there's two agreements here. One is between ourselves and the state for the funding to pass down to us, and the other is for our funding to pay for the work we're proposing to add to this project. We are in the closeout phase, and we're happy to report the project is carrying over ten thousand cars a day today, here eight months after we opened it. And as we wrap up some of the punch list items and clean up the project, we did encounter an issue with a culvert. This is the Silver Comet underpass at what was Flaburn Parkway, is now known as East Hyrum Parkway. It's been renamed to Gilkerut Parkway. We have pedestrians in that tunnel. That tunnel is based on the design that was used to carry water typically in their road. It's the same design that was used for other tunnels. was used for other tunnels from Buchanan Street out in Hollywood to Polk County. And basically, it's not designed to be perfectly waterproof. We did encounter kind of unusual amount of moisture entering the surface that are coming through the culvert early on. That's diminished to the point that, in our opinion, really is not a concern. However, this is still a federal highways project, and they would like us to perform some additional waterproofing to this culvert. And unfortunately, some of this culvert's already, it's finished and it's covered up with grass, and we've got sidewalk and guardrail above it now. And what we're proposing to do is dig up some of the construction joints where concrete was terminated, then it was extended on out to the final length that we needed. And it was a designed structural joint, and it's basically, it will drip water on occasion. But what we have to do to try to prevent that is dig up the exterior of the culvert in two locations and apply waterproofing membrane. And then inside the culvert, they have asked us to do some crack sealing, which are typical hairline cracks you'd find in a concrete structure, that they think would help diminish the chance of moisture entering both the structural cell and getting to the reinforced steel and things like that. So we're happy to perform the work. It's 100% pass-through from federal highway to GDOT to us, and in turn, we're finding the work with our contractor to supplement our agreement.
Any questions? In English, the federal government said, we spent this money and we want the culvert done this way, and here's the money to do it if you don't do it, we'll give our money back.
It's their call, absolutely. There's not a flaw in the design, it's performed as expected. We never intended to make these culverts perfectly dry environments. The trail's an outdoor environment, there's water and places you encounter on the trail. And obviously, it's not a huge issue, and it seems like an expensive fix, but it's their money. We're fine to manage the proposal prepared.
Well, it's kind of a ridiculous request, wasting money to waterproof a culvert that was designed to leak. And it is our taxpayer dollar, but we really have to do what they asked us to do.
Well, you know, I'm pleased that they're looking at the project, taking interest in it. And it is a concern. I think it's a very remote issue as far as the operation of that culvert, but it is an issue, and you can argue it in both ways. So like I said, I appreciate your approval to move forward with this, and we'll get done as quickly as possible, and with as little inconvenience as we can to users of the trail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Highness.
Number three, discuss action to approve an amendment to the engineering services agreement with Arcadis US Incorporated for final design services of the dam and reservoir water treatment plant and river intake pump station. Reservoir intake pump station associated with Bridgeland Creek Water Supply Program at a cost of $5,188,300. Today, we have Kelly Cumstock with Brown Colwell, we have Mark Latbridge, we're here with Brown Colwell, and we have the other John Dean here with Arcadis. So Kelly, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. It's my pleasure to be in front of you today to discuss this agenda item number three.
The other John Dean raised him. And ours here, and then raised his hand.
As that warms up, the agenda item that will be in front of you this afternoon is for final design services for several of the main components of the Bridgeland Creek Water Supply Program, including the reservoir, the water treatment plant, and the two primary pump stations associated with the facility.
And you serve as our...
I am your program manager, yes. I'm overseeing the design, the procurement, the design, and construction of the entire program. The agenda item is an amendment to a contract with Arcadis. They are the designer of these facilities. They are currently under contract with the county. They've done preliminary design for these facilities, including coming up with the process for the water treatment plant, the preliminary design of the dam itself, preliminary design of the pump stations. They've also done a very extensive geotechnical investigation of the dam area itself. And as one of their other amendments, they've done some pilot testing for the process, which is essentially a miniature version of the water treatment plant, determining the final, what the final process parameters will be. So this amendment is for the actual final design, taking it from the preliminary concept design and actually producing biddable specifications and drawings to allow the facilities to be constructed. When you look at the overall program, as we've discussed previously, there are five primary components associated with the Bridgeland Creek Water Supply Program. The reservoir itself, that's located at the very northern end of Paulding County, a 305 acre reservoir. An intake that's located on the Etowah River that pumps water from the Etowah River via a 48-inch raw water pipeline into the reservoir. That'll pump during high flow periods in the river, fill the reservoir, and then there'll be a separate pump station located at the reservoir site that will pump out of the reservoir into the new water treatment plant. And then from that water treatment plant, there will be distribution system improvements that take place that convey the water down into the lower parts of Paulding County.
Because now today, our water system runs east-west.
That's correct.
And we will have to redesign to carry it north-south.
That's correct. And a lot of the population of the county is the southern part of the county. So the existing infrastructure is very small diameter pipelines that are in place right now. That is correct. So this amendment is for final design services associated with the dam and the reservoir, the water treatment plant, and the two pump stations that are all part of the contract, or that are all part of the program itself. The scope involves the final design of all of these components. There are two different primary means of procurement for construction that will take place. The dam and reservoir will be procured using a traditional design bid-build approach. So Arcadis will take the design to 100%, create thousands of specifications, documents, and drawings that will be issued to bidding contractors that will then provide a bid to the county, and a contractor will be selected. That's a typical historical procurement approach. The plant and the pump stations will be procured using a construction manager at risk, C-MAR approach. And in that capacity, Arcadis will serve as the C-MAR designer. The advantage of a C-MAR approach is you're able to bring the contractors onboard early in the design process and give their input throughout the design. And in the case of this particular program, it makes a lot of sense because you are not yet set on what that initial expansion, or that initial level of capacity will be. We looked, or Ralph Kellis looked at three different levels of initial expansion, and basically, their financial analysis showed that an initial capacity of 18 MGD made the most sense in terms of long-term rates, rate stability, and the best value for the county. But right now, we need to determine what that cost is going to be and if that's affordable to the county. So by using the C-MAR approach, you bring the contractor that's going to be building the work onboard during the design process, and you establish guaranteed maximum prices throughout the design process, so you understand upfront what the ultimate construction cost is going to be. So part of the contract with Arcadis will be coordination with the C-MAR contractor for the water plant and the two pump stations designs. Additionally, within their contract, there are two requirements of the Georgia Safe Dams Permit for documents that have to be prepared as part of the permitting of the dam and reservoir. And that includes an emergency action plan and an O and M manual that establishes what maintenance needs to take place over those facilities over time. Those two documents will also be prepared by Arcadis as the engineer of record for Fort Reservoir and Dam.
When you say permit, you're actually talking about the state permit to build the structure.
That's correct. That's for...
Not even going through.
404 permit from the court. No, this is, there will be, obviously, there will be a 4 permit, there will be a permit for the dam, and there will also be a permit for the drinking water facility. That comes from the drinking water program. The dam comes from the safe dam. Those are both part of ETP. Those are state whole permits that are in place. And interface has taken place so far within, with the program with those entities as well. So looking ahead, the reservoir design will basically be procured using a conventional design bid-build approach. The intakes and the water treatment plant will be procured using the C-MAR approach. So you can see very quickly, the C-MAR contractor will come onboard, and together with Arcadis, they will establish this 30% GMP. At that point, the county will be at a decision point as to what the capacity will need to be for this first level. Will it be 5 MGD, 12, 18? What makes the most sense financially? At that point, we'll also be looking at additional funding options, what's available for JIFA from the state, what could they potentially provide, and the decision point will be made. The other procurement point that will take place in the near term is the raw water pipeline. That's the pipeline that goes from the raw water intake to the reservoir. That will be a 48-inch pipeline regardless of the size of the plant. You will want to build that for the long-term ultimate capacity of the system. It will be a 48-inch pipeline, so it makes sense to move forward with that procurement. Using a design-build approach, you're able to understand what that cost is at that decision point, so that you know the entire program cost in order to move forward.
Now, the raw water pipeline is not part of this contract?
No, sir, yes. That'll be procured using a design-build approach, which is a combination of a designer and a constructor. And that will be, and RFP's in development now, that'll likely come out before the end of the year.
So what you plan to do is simultaneously start building that raw water pipeline as you're building the dam and the reservoir?
Yes, and that's critical for the sequencing, and that, I guess, comes up to this next slide. It's important to look at everything in parallel, the reservoir, which has one of the longest lead times in terms of construction, and the plant as well. Those are moving forward, but we need to move forward with the raw water pipeline as well, because in order to fill the reservoir, that raw water pipeline has to be in place. So that's a key, important component to the project as well. So over the end of this year, you'll see some additional procurement work that's taking place, including the C-MAR contractor, that RFP is out on the street right now, and the development of this design-build contract for the raw water pipeline. So with that, I'd like to open it up. Any questions?
Well, we were all present when Ralph Kellis presented the financial model. We also invited Commissioner Legg, Bernie Collet, Commissioner Legg, Tony Crowe to hear this. And over a period of time, we're going to have approximately $150 million in this reservoir. Or we could keep buying water from Bob Marietta and have a little bit more than $150 million invested in that. And, you know, I looked at a lot of things, not only do we have our own water system, but during this process, have, do we know, or could you come back to us later and tell us how many jobs will be created out of this project?
Yes, sir. Yes, I mean, substantial investment in terms of, in terms of the size of this project, in terms of the reservoir construction, the water plant, there will be a substantial number of jobs. And yes, we can provide you an estimate with the total number of this program.
So I know we all feel like that's probably a no-brainer, if you've got the same amount of money invested in both types of procuring water. The one puts a lot of people to work, and the other is just a continuance of what we've been doing.
And you secure your long-term squash, yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Kelly? The, even though they're taking it to a 30% design, this contract actually is all the way to finish.
And it's a cost-not-to exceed contract, so it's a time and materials. So if that 30% design, their contract is for an 18 MGD design. If at that 30% level, the decision is made, we need to do a 12 MGD initial expansion, then they won't spend all of this money. This is the worst case scenario.
But it's all the way until we're pumping water.
100%, yes.
It's for everything but the raw water pipeline.
That's correct. Now, this is all design services?
Right, yeah.
Not the construction.
Any other questions? And this is what we pay for with the JIFA loans that we've already established? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Mark, John, thank you both. Number four, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a permission contract in the amount of $129,495 with pro engineering for civil engineering design services associated with the Department of Driver Services facility to be located on the Watson-German Conference. Chuck Ramsey.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
As you all know, we've been working with Department of Driver Services, Georgia State Financing Investment Commission, as well as the Georgia State Properties Commission for a final site location with the ZDS facility. And that is going to be here on campus. And earlier this year, resolution 14 dash 25 was the action that the board took to convey a 1.1 acre parcel to the state of Georgia. Again, this is on the northwest side of the campus, right outside of the courthouse. The state of Georgia is selling bonds to cover the cost of the building, which is around $1.2 million, and the county is providing the funds to clear and prepare the site, including parking lots, training area, and associated utilities. The FY 2015 budget included $700,000 to begin this work at the facility for the site prep and the road improvements that are involved with it. We work with GSPix Consultant, which is Warner Somers Architecture Interior Design, to understand their needs of the site and to prepare the attached scope and services that you see in your backup. The attached proposals include both the site improvements and proposed roadway extension, which is Justice Center Drive, which will take you from this northwest corner all the way back out to Business 6. Our understanding is that once the majority of the site work is complete, GSPix contractor will move on to the property, and they will construct the building, complete third portion of the project. The current schedule shows the site improvements to be complete in August of 2015, provided the remaining road improvements are funded in FY 2016. Construction would not begin until late 2015. So you've got the engineering proposals, conceptual drawings, and the work schedules in backup. And if you have any questions, I'll take them.
We're actually, we have two contracts here. One for the design of the site, which in our initial discussions, in order for them to use the site, you've got to have, you've got to start the roadway design.
That is correct.
And you also need to do something with the dirt. So the other contract in here is actually to finish designing the roadway. So when you start breaking, whether you finish the roadway or not, you know where it's going to go in long-term, what you got.
That is correct. And there are two contracts here, and the site improvements include the site pad, the building pad, and the road that's running both sides of the facility and doing the design on it. Full design on the road lets us know where that road needs to be when we finish up.
And we're, with the site design, we're within our $700,000, give or take $10,000 or so.
Yes, we are.
Okay. But the actual road design part, I mean, we'll use it out of our 700, but in other words, that road design is, we're going to design it, but it's actually, we'll push the 700 over if we did not fund the road extension.
What it comes down to is you've got about $55,000 worth of design cost that we're not included in that, this fiscal year's budget. And if it was not funded for next year, then that would come out during that.
I want to thank you for your dedication. Nobody knows how many hours this man puts into things like this, and your Georgia State Patrol post, and libraries and other things he does. So I appreciate it. Any other questions? Thank you. There's no executive session, no public participation. And before I adjourn, I will remind you to vote. I'm doing exactly what Dave asked me to do, is remind you. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Right here, Mr. President.